We'll start off with a prayer.
Dear Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve St. Petersburg College. We thank you for all of the staff and employees. We thank you for our leadership in our country, in our city, and in our state. Please, God, all of them. And, Lord, we ask that you bless each and every student on each and every campus. All these blessings I ask in your son's name and in whom's name you may pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll sign all this. We'll right along to presentations and resolutions.
Can I ask Diana Getz to join me here? Is Diana here? She's not coming, okay. And then Ronald Lee Klace. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Do what we can. Ronald Lee Klace has served St. Petersburg College for 28 years, starting as a part-time printer, word processor, and advancing into full-time position as the operator of the college's high-speed, most complex printer. And whereas Ms. Klace developed a rapport with print shop clients and gained a reputation for ensuring their printing leaving the department was done at the highest level of excellence, and whereas Ms. Klace represented St. Pete College in a positive light by participating for many years in a great American teaching, visiting classrooms at local schools to share her job skills that she had mastered. And whereas Ms. Klace, while working full-time and raising children as a single parent, also succeeded in earning her AA and AS degrees in crime scene technology at St. Petersburg College. And whereas Ms. Klace has, over time, gone out of her way on numerous occasions to complete work on time for instructors and others who submitted last-minute printing requests.[145.81][145.81](Laughter). Please don't interrupt me while I'm reading.[151.69][151.69](Laughter). Often working into the evening hours to make sure students had the materials they needed in time for next day's class. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Ronald Lee Klace and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 21st day of January here. Congratulations.[182.06][182.06](Applause).
Apparently, they did, too. My instructors did.
We're gonna take a picture here? Okay, you get this. Okay.
It's one of my sons.
Oh, fabulous. I'm glad you could do it this way. Thanks very much. Good. Congratulations.
Not me. I don't speak in public. I have to.
Okay. We'll move to comments. Do any of the board members have any comments? Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. No comments over the last month? All right. We'll move right to our public comments. If we have any public speakers, Laura? No public speakers? All right. So, we're down to, I need a motion to approve our minutes from our last meeting of November 19th.
And the planning session.
And the planning session. So, the December 10th as well.
So moved. As to both?
Second.
They're probably moving second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're down to our monthly reports. Mr. Lang?
Have nothing to report, sir.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm just fine. How are you doing?
Good. Ms. Gardner?
Good morning. I have no report.
Okay. And now, we're to Dr. Oliver.
Who always has a report?
Who always has a report?
Always has something to report.[257.31][257.31](Laughter). Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Law, thank you for this morning. I'm here to talk about the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions, which is a college-wide initiative based on the Seminole campus, created to be, quote, "a community resource to address real-world problems in a systematic, strategic way, providing solutions that meet the needs of the community served by the college and the world beyond Pinellas County." Was founded with funding by the legislature to be a policy center to serve the entire Florida college system. The master plan for the institute was approved by this Board of Trustees in the fall of 2010. That plan identified five overarching objectives as the primary focus of the institute at the core of its mission statement. They are academic enrichment, civic engagement, public discourse, economic vitality, and a national connection. The institute has established four activity spheres or areas of support that support that mission and those objectives. And they've been taking shape as program opportunities emerged from the real world and in discussions with students and faculty and community leaders, other stakeholders have taken place. The four areas are first, educational programming. At the heart of the institute's mission are programs about local, regional, state, and national issues, and discussion around clarifying and solving complex questions that face our communities and our nation. The two major areas of programming include forums. The forum series, we've held a series of free forums focusing on topical issues of the day. Examples include the Future of Energy Series, Gulf Oil Spill Series, and the forum on state constitutional amendments. All of those had 500 or so individuals in attendance, large forums for the public. Now, the second is the Village Square. That's a membership organization dedicated to civil conversation on a local, state, and national policy issues in a relaxed, informal setting over a meal. Typically, 100 to 200 people come to those Village Square sessions quarterly. The second is partnership activities. The institute seeks out partnerships in support of its mission in areas like academic research, economic stimulation, and government connections. Examples include the Project for Accountable Justice, which you may hear about next month. That's our window on Tallahassee. Some are one-time and some are ongoing and include internal partnerships with other areas of the college. A notable example being the Public Policy and Administration Program, Baccalaureate Program, that Dean Demers will be speaking with you next. The third is the Special Projects Area. Initiatives that focus on longer-range civic needs or goals. One example is a special project is the work with the Graham and Fry Centers to promote civic education all across the institutions in the state college system. And the fourth is our annual dinner, the Distinguished Public Service Award Dinner, presented to a local, state, or nationally-recognized public servant. The first dinner is planned next month to honor former State Senator Dennis Jones. In the future, the institute staff looks forward to expanding and extending these activities. The civics education and project for accountable justice will continue. We are retooling the Village Square to be more intensively interactive and with extended audience participation. Upcoming free forums include sessions on Greenlight Pinellas Proposal in advance of the referendum next fall. And on February 3rd, the institute will partner with the Tampa Bay Times, Bay News 9, and the AARP to host the candidate debate for the 13th Congressional District. In all these areas, we actively engage and involve our students. This spring, the institute is organizing its first student-only event, The Great Debate, where students from all the campuses will be involved in the discussions of the day. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think we have it worked out for next month for our Tallahassee partners to come and just introduce. We're working hard for, if you have a public policy institute, it's a good thing to have a Tallahassee window for that institute, a place where you can connect to Florida's public policy. So, through Jim's good efforts and David Clement, we're working with the Project for Accountable Justice at the Florida State University, the Florida Institute of Government. So, we've held some joint kinds of things, and we'll invite them down next month to just give an idea of where that's headed. I think it has great potential for us.
Thank you very much.
Jim, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a moment?
Sure.
Dr. Oliver, I just want to say thank you. I'm sorry, I know you're, I'm catching you as you're walking away. I am the chair of the Local Planning Agency here in Pinellas County, and we had a situation where we had to use the digitorium because we thought we were going to have such a large crowd over at the Seminole Campus. And I spent several hours working with staff and going through things and arranging furniture and things like that. And all I can tell you is, is that we certainly, we certainly have a wonderful group from, you know, from, from the staff at the top to the folks who are making sure that the water got in there, and, I mean, you just have a good group over there. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks very much. It was our pleasure.
No, you're fine. That's good. Dr. Demers? Good morning.
Good morning. See if I can, yes. Good morning. My name is Susan Demers, and I'm the dean of the College of Policy, Ethics, and Legal Studies, which in its way is a little microcosm of the entire college. We have lower division, upper division, general education, and workforce classes, all within this one piece of the college. To begin with, I want to tell you about our three ABA-approved paralegal studies programs. There's an AS degree, which includes an internship, Bachelor of Applied Sciences, which also includes an internship, and then a 24-credit post-baccalaureate certificate program, which, as you might imagine, is the fastest-growing piece of it. People who have degrees like, oh, anthropology are looking for a way to find a job, and there are lots of paralegal positions in offices. People with all those general education liberal arts skills need to have them refined into a way that it can be applied pretty quickly, and there are lots of paralegal-type positions in the Tampa Bay area. We also house our Applied Ethics Institute, which is a central part of every SPC degree. Every student at SPC takes PHI 1600, which is a hybrid applied ethics class. It's got a little bit of traditional philosophy, a lot of the difference between right and wrong, and critical thinking, and logic, and then it has lots of applications to real-life dilemmas. And that course is incorporated into every degree here at SPC. We have a competitive ethics team, and we will be representing the college at the end of February at the National Ethics Bowl, having won the Regional Ethics Bowl in November. We also will be hosting a high school ethics competition at that fabulous Seminole Campus next month, which will include all of Pinellas County, both charter and public schools. And finally, we house the college's newest four-year degree program, which is a degree in public policy and administration. And this is the perfect place for that degree. You know, if you go to school at the University of Florida, your chances for internship are Alachua County, McEnopie, and Gainesville. But if you go to school here in Pinellas County, you have 24 separate municipalities plus an infinity of governmental agencies that can house your internship. And so, we have multiple internships here in Pinellas County, and our crackerjack instructor-in-charge, Jeff Kronchnabel, is tied to every single one of them in some way, and our students have had wonderful success. So, with that, I want to close by inviting you to the Palladium this evening at 7:00 PM, where Derek Brooks will be addressing our students on the importance of being involved in your community. It's the Keith Gory Annual Lecture, which is always about ethics in the community, but tonight, Mr. Brooks, who has a huge community presence, has agreed to speak to our students. So, 7:00 PM at the Palladium, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Susan, before you leave the microphone, Susan has an alter ego, too. She, she has a, had and enjoys a career in the theater. You are producing or directing?
Directing.
Go ahead. Now's your moment.
All right. So, our spring show for SPC Theater, and Dean Steele will probably be telling you about it again before we, before April 2nd, which is when we open, Imaginary Envelope on the St., I'm sorry, on the Clearwater Campus, and we have a wonderful adaptation of that classic Moliere play that's been gifted to us by Constance Congdon, who is teaching at Mount Holyoke this semester, but ordinarily teaches at Manhattan Marymount. So, thank you, sir.
Wow. Thank you.
Any comments? Ms. Brandt? Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Law. My name is Carol Brandt, and I am the chair of the Career Service Employee Council, and today I'd like to share just a little bit about what's happening with us. We're now in our third year of existence, and our purpose is to act in advisory capacity to the president, to support issues of importance to all career service employees, and to make recommendations as we do our part in providing the highest-quality learning experience for all of our SPC students. The Career Service Employee Council has a steering committee, which is comprised of 24 representatives stemming from our eight sites and learning centers, and includes three representatives from each of those locations, one in facility services, one in student services, and one in administrative support, administrative support representative. And we represent approximately 730 career service employees. And our main objective can really be summed up in one word, and that is communication. Communication with Dr. Law, with our college leadership and administrators, with you, the Board of Trustees, and also all of our career service employees. And a couple, just two months ago, back in November, we took a major step in communicating with our executive leadership team, when at actually Dr. Law's invitation, we sat down for a face-to-face meeting. All 24 representatives were invited. And it, the purpose of the meeting was really to have direct and open communication, and so we thank you for that, Dr. Law. And so, we started by asking the career service employees, what do you want us to ask? What do you, what, you know, what do you want to know? And so, we gave them an opportunity to ask either directly to their campus representative or by submitting an email or by way of an online survey. And so, we took those questions directly. We gathered them up, and we took them to the leadership, and we were able to ask face-to-face questions that affect our ability to serve and that affect our interaction with our students here. And so, those, all of that information was then shared with all the career employees and is also posted in SharePoint. And in addition, one of the things that we wanted to know is, what do you like best about working at St. Petersburg College? And so, I wanted to share just a few things with you. Far and above, there were three items that just overwhelmingly were positive responses, and that is in the area of helping students. Our career service employees really appreciate the, the time that we get to spend directly with students and making a difference in their lives, and the joy that we feel when we get to see them walk across that stage to receive their diploma. Secondly, they said, they really appreciate their coworkers, that they have a rich appreciation for those with whom they share their work hours with and each day, but they also have an appreciation for the leadership on their campuses. And third was benefits, that we have very good benefits here at the college, and they appreciate the insurance that we continue to, to receive each year, that, that you, as a board, have been dedicated to making sure that we continue to keep those good insurance policies, that we have paid sick and holidays, and that we get vacation days. So, those were the top three, but a few other comments that were submitted was the feeling of being appreciated, of being respected, that we work in friendly environments, and our campuses are very beautiful, but also that professional development training and learning opportunities are available, but they're also encouraged, and, and so we look forward to continuing to take advantage of those. So, we valued this experience and the open communication that we had, and we will continue this endeavor as we actually seek to have another meeting again this spring term. And we feel that it gives us a better opportunity to understand things from somebody else's perspective and to have that, that direct communication. And so, we will continue this as we, using this information, as we seek to serve students in the best way possible. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Wester?
I have a question. We heard about the three best things. What were the three, what were the three biggest complaints or concerns? I won't say complaints, concerns.
Well, communication. So, this was a good step in the right direction. How do we communicate better? And, and that includes we, as their representatives, how do we communicate the information that we receive better to them? So, the long lines probably in student services, and we have that every term, at the beginning of every term, when you have your last-minute students who maybe are procrastinators, for lack of a better term. And so, it is a long wait. And so, those, those were really the, the top concerns.
What's the phrase? Your failure to plan does not equal my emergency?
They don't always see it that way, though.[1211.15][1211.15](Laughter).
If that's the worst we got, we're doing okay.
Thank you.
Just, Carol, thank you very much. I meet every month with the group, and we share whatever, whatever the topic comes from, from the group. We've adopted now twice a year the expanded group that Carol was talking about. The vice presidents join us for a working lunch, so that I'm not translating what I hear in the meeting to vice presidents, so we can just solve problems. We try to find things we can do right away, things that may take some study and things that we've got to put on a list. So, it was a really good meeting. People were, I think, quite candid. So, thank you for your leadership on that, Carol.
Thank you.
And trustee Westy, I, I know the comment that you gave to Jim, you were just ahead of yourself on that, because the real work to say thanks goes to, we know who gets the work done on Seminole Campus.
(Laughter). Thanks.[1262.23][1262.23](Laughter).
Wow. Moving right along.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, well, I'm not known for being quiet, but I promise one I will.
Moving right along. So, all business. We have a follow-up to some discussion that we had last month in our meeting, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, I think you, I tried to capture sort of the dialogue we're having on the fly during the planning session, providing more time for the board to discuss issues among yourselves and to do that. So, we continue to work to streamline the agenda, recognizing everybody's busy and trying to value your time the most. My proposal is that we think of the, the board meeting in two parts. One is the, sort of the fiduciary and standing items, the recognitions and all the kinds of reports that you would get. And then, we will work very hard on part two to, to have three major topics, not every month, but within the three major topics would be strategic priorities, that is topics that we discuss that need follow-up and where you want to engage on that. Secondly, budget and finance. We do that, the spring, we put a good deal of time in on that as we're working toward the adoption of an operating budget. And then, three, the student success items. That has been a very significant part of our thing. We have of our board meetings, I have started to develop a six-month calendar for each topical areas in each of those three areas, so that we have a logic to what happens each month. If that's to your liking, the only thing that I think you would really notice is the adoption of a consent agenda, where we try to move through the first half as deliberately as we can, so that your time is best spent on the things that I think require, where the board's contribution is at its highest and best use, okay? Mr. Chairman, that, that was sort of the sense I picked up from, from our work, if we can work on that. As soon as the staff signs off on what we think the next six months might look like, we'll pass that to the board and say, is this, does this make sense to each of you? We'll try not to do all things, 20 minutes is sometimes nowhere near enough, sometimes it's plenty, and we'll try to.
Then we can modify that as needed at the meeting. So, any comments from board members? I think, I think this definitely reflects what we talked about, Dr. Law, and the 20 minutes is fine. Some are going to be, some issues are going to be more hot topics than the other ones, a little bit more sexy, and we'll talk about them a little longer than we need to. And then, sometimes we'll go under these. So, I think it looks fine.
I think with the calendar going forward, we'll make sure we're not competing for time each month.
Sure.
We can, we can put some lesser topics with some that we know are going to take more time. So, we'll try to get that.
I think it's necessary, though, just to bring everybody up to speed on what we're doing, especially in terms of strategic planning for the future.
And then, Mr. Chairman, in that same memo, I went through and reread the real-time record from our meeting, and I, I picked out the, the key items that were discussed. You have, we, additionally, you got a, a copy of the real-time record in your, your board packet. We are taking these topical areas and converting those to the budget development process. So, when we, when we come back to you, you will see actions tied to dollars, tied to these priorities that came from your discussions at the December board meeting. So, that's the, the process as, as we have identified it. If you don't see something, I really worked hard to try to pick up even key words that, that individuals at the board gave us as, as insights. If you don't see your part, this, this was my best effort going through. Give me a call, and we'll, we'll modify these. And then, eventually, in, coming up, we will actually have a strategic plan for next year that you will get to adopt, working with these as the key drivers.
Board members? Sounds good. Sounds good. Good job, Dr. Law. We're on to, do we need to take a, do we need to take a vote on? No, we don't.
You know, we didn't vote on the resolutions.
On the resul-
I think that's the only thing we have to.
Oh, we did not. Can I have a, a motion to accept the resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moving second. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're on to new business, which is an information item, student achievement, success and achievement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, typically at the January meeting and at the August meeting, sometimes September, we try to, we do a thing called who's here. What's the enrollment look like? Is it up a little, down a little? But who, what's it comprised of? What, what cells are increasing, what are not? This time, there are really three pieces to the puzzle that we want to share. So, there's some good news regarding the fall success rates that, you know, have been the keystone of what we're trying to do with our student retention. Then we'll have the spring who's here in a somewhat abbreviated version, and the third, then developmental education. We've put a lot of energy into addressing the developmental change, and we've learned some things. We'll have, we'll share with you what we've learned in the last six, three or four months. Dr. Kraus here.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some exciting news. We're up for our third consecutive term. We're up in course success rates. And I know we've put a lot of energy. I really appreciate, the college appreciates the board's direction and, and investment that we've been willing to put into things like the college experience, things like changes in our support system for students, changes in academic standing, changes in life plan, kinds of models, but it's really starting to play, pay dividends. We're going to talk about course success rates. I've quickly got the formula up there. It's essentially all A, B, and C grades over all other grades. But you can see when you look at the last fall, three fall terms, we're making a progressive increase overall in the college. Now, a lot of our student initiatives are focused on our first-time-in-college students, and we're going to break down and look at that data in just a second. But we constantly get grades in. We actually have another 800 grades that we've gotten in since I've done this presentation. A lot of those are off-campus dual enrollment classes, which are traditionally going to have a higher course success rate. But we're at 76.5 actually now. So, we're slowly making incremental changes when we look at the big, large scope of all students. Here's a kind of a breakdown overall, and then we can look at some of our growth by campus. You'll see our Tarpin Springs campus is up 3.4 percent. EpiCenter is 3.6. Seminole Campus is up 2.7. St. Pete gives 1.8. Slight declines in some of our, our higher course success areas, like the Health Education Center, as well as open campus. And again, open campus are going to be those students who are in high school classes off campus, so they're actually dual enrollment courses in the high school. Some of that's a little bit of a regression to the mean, where we see when we have really high success rates, they start to dip down over time. Here's a breakdown where we see our overall course success rate and the change over time as compared to our first-time-in-college success rate. As I mentioned before, a lot of those strategic initiatives are very focused on these first-time-in-college students, especially those in greatest needs, those that have difficulty in terms of college readiness or coming in and taking some of those developmental courses right off the bat. Here, you can see larger gains. We're actually up 5% when it comes to our first-time-in-college students. And when I say percent up, this is actually an additive thing. I'm not actually looking at percent improvement. I'm actually looking at five percentage points higher than it was in the previous term. Our males had the biggest gains. Our female, as you look at the success rates for females and males for Fall 2013, you can see there's quite a difference in the two rates. As I mentioned before, a lot of those strategic initiatives are very focused on these first-time-in-college students, especially those in greatest needs, those that have difficulty in terms of college readiness, or coming in and taking some of those developmental courses right off the bat. Here, you can see larger gains. We're actually up 5 percent when it comes to our first-time-in-college students. And when I say percent up, this is actually an additive thing, I'm not actually looking at percent improvement, I'm actually looking at five percentage points higher than it was in the previous term. Our males had the biggest gains. Our female, as you look at the success rates for females and males for fall 2013, you can see there's quite a difference in the two rates. But that was a large change for the males to improve, 6.1 percent increase fall over fall. When we look at some of our minority groups, for our Black African-American students, they're up 9.5 percent overall. Hispanic Latino is up 7.4 percent, and for our white students, they're up 3.6. This is probably what we're most excited about, this is the same data, but it's in a visual representation. Look all the way to the right, you notice those dots getting a lot closer? That's the achievement gap, and we're starting to close it down. You actually see the Hispanic first-time-in-college students outperformed our white students for the first time over that three-term period. Our Black African-American students closed the gap quite a bit during that timeframe. We're going to look some further breakdowns, but keep an eye on that right side of the chart as we go on. When we look at our male students, and again, we looked at that earlier chart, and we looked at over-male males, they're the ones that are struggling the most. For our Black African-American male students, they were up 13.8 percent. So they were only at about a 51 percent success rate going back to last fall, it's now up to 65 percent. For our Hispanic Latino male students, they're up 6.5, and for our white male students, they're up 5 percent. And again, if you look to the right, we're closing that gap. This is going, we're going to look at a couple breakdowns in different course types. The first course type we're going to look at is first-time-in-college, but these are developmental courses only, okay? So these are students that come in, they're not college-ready, and we're giving them, they're taking, at this point in time, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the changes to developmental education. But for last fall, they would take a placement test, which would determine where they would fall in terms of college readiness, and they would have to take developmental courses. So this is developmental only. For all first-time-in-college, it's up 4.9 percent, male 6.3. Our African-American students were up 7.9 percent, with the male students up 9.2. Hispanic was up 5.4, and Hispanic male was up 9.6. So for both our minority male populations, they were both up 9 percent, almost 10 percent. These are gateway courses. Now, gateway courses are typically large-volume courses that are in the front end of the program. So this would be things like your Composition 1 course, or your Intermediate Algebra course, these are courses they take to the front end of the program. Here, we had some very big gains for African-American male student, African-American students are up 9.7, for African-American male students, they were at 17.9. Again, look at last fall's numbers, it was only 49 percent success rate. So only 49 percent of the grades were A, Bs, or Cs. Hispanic 7.1, and Hispanic male 6.6. So just some kind of noteworthy observations, again, we're very excited, three consecutive terms. We'll talk a little bit about what our developmental ed is placing us, so there may be some challenges as we move forward, especially the spring term that we're in, but we're excited of what we've accomplished. And again, it goes a lot to what we've done in terms of all the work the college has provided in the college experience. FTIC cohort is up 5 percent. In all courses, our minority students are up 9.5 for African-American students, and 7.4 for Hispanic students. We look at the males, we have even greater gains, 13.8 and 6.5. And then we looked at some of those specialty courses, there's even larger gains. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions, board members?
I have one. I mean, I know there's been intense focus on this, so there's probably lots of things that have made a difference. But for somebody that's only been here since May, what's the one thing, if you had to put it in one container, that you would say has made the biggest difference?
I would say, I think it's a synergy of things. You mentioned there's a lot of different things we're working on. The college experience has five, you know, key areas, and we made some changes to policy as well, to really set expectations for students on the front end, so they go to these orientation sessions, and we say, these are the expectations, and we work with them through it. What happened before is, I think, we had, we didn't have policies that had as much teeth as they do now, and we didn't have those conversations with students. So what happened is, they came here, they would get in trouble, and, you know, they would hear, oh, I can't get financial aid anymore, yet I'm still in good academic standing with your college, and they would be confused. And we would say, oh, well, our financial aid policy's stricter than our academic standing policy. So we set some things even in place, and we let them know on the front end, and we provide the support. The other thing I think that made a big difference is the synergy of these five things allows us to identify who's in trouble. So as opposed to doing a boutique program, where investing a lot of money in a few students, and often having success with those few students, we really financially can't expand them up to a larger group. Our models are really designed to kind of build the safety net, and define those students that are getting stuck in the net underneath, and going right to them and helping them. So things like early alerts, we're identifying them right away when they struggle, faculty members working with them, if a faculty member can't help, they're calling out, you know, phoning that line to a student success coach who's now intervening and working directly with that student. We're doing things like learning plans to say, hey, you know, this is your plan, now you have a plan for what to do. You don't have to go to advisor every single term and not be sure what you're going to do. If they struggle academically in that first-time-in-college group, we're doing things with the life plan to identify them as early as the third week of courses. You know, if they drop a class, we're identifying them right away and saying, now, we're going to start working with you directly, we're going to help you out. So I think the models we've created have really created that net to help students be successful.
Thank you.
Any more comments? I'll just say, this is exactly what we knew we could do, and everyone should be proud of themselves, should pat themselves on the back, staff, everybody that's been involved in this. This is a great success that we're seeing, these numbers with minority students rising. I would ask one thing, though, Dr. Law, if we send a copy of this to Ken Burke. He was on my back every time, he's like, man, there's only three African-American males that graduated this time, and so if you would, you guys send a copy of this to Ken Burke, so he can see the, his effort did not, and his pressuring me was not in vain, he pressured all of us to try to do better with minority students. And he was a part of this, definitely in terms of the strategy and making sure a policy was set to make sure that we were successful with minority students, but now he should see that we're on the right track, and that this board is continuing his legacy in terms of making sure minority students have a chance to survive, especially those first-time-in-college students. So you guys have done a great job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Dr. Renard is going to do the "who's here".
Okay, I thought we were talking about "who's here", right?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. As is customary, the first board meeting after the term starts, we're here to give you kind of a snapshot of our student population on opening day, really two parts of this presentation. Jesse's going to start it off by showing you our enrollment planning process, which is largely done with the engagement of the deans and building our class schedule, which we then use for planning and budgeting purposes. And then I'm going to show you, for more external reporting purposes, year-over-year comparison in enrollment.
The deans have been working very hard with the provost, building schedules and tying those schedules directly to our budgets and revenue and cost structures. In fact, right now, they're working on the 1415 course schedule that we'll have for next year, and we'll be bringing that information to the board along with the budget over the next few months.
Very quickly, just for issue of other board members, would you tell us how that schedule's made? How do you put those two together?
That's what, we're going to sort of outline how we put that together right now.
Yeah, we actually have a committee that gets together, and we'll bring it back to the board in a lot more detail, but we have a committee that gets together and works on that. The deans actually get together and they plan their schedule using historical data. The first slide I want to show you here is really our results of planning. So in the planning phase, they're actually looking at historical trend data, looking at what course types have more enrollment, what have lower enrollment, they're looking at students are progressing through the sequence of courses. So if we have a first-level sequence of a course has more students than a second, we'd plan the next year, we'd have more enrollment in a second as that enrollment moved through. So they actually come up with it overall, and then they work individually with the provost to determine how they're going to lay that out based on the modality, whether it's online or face-to-face or blended, and then what campuses and times and those kinds of things. But these are the results of our effort in terms of the planning component. This is for spring, and again, they do it all for the entire year at one time, and then we can break it out and look at it for each term. So for spring, opening day, we had 262,147 student semester hours, or what we often refer to as SSH. Now, we budgeted for revenue for 268,193. So we're about 2 percent off. But I will point out that our budgeted enrollment is based on the entire semester, and we're comparing it to a single day, which is our opening day. As the semester goes on, we'll add more sections, and we'll have different session types, such as express session, and also a second eight weeks. So we'll build enrollment. Last spring, we built about 2,000 more SSH as the semester went on. So I'm anticipating these numbers are going to go up, in fact, I have some more information to share on that. So that's the enrollment planning side. Then we have the management side. So the planning is figuring out how much cost, how much revenue we're going to have, and we all do that in the front end. And then as we get closer to the semester, we don't release every single course at once. We're going to release the vast majority of courses, but we're going to keep some courses back in tentative, because there's a lot of other external environmental factors that are going to have an impact on enrollment. Things like the economy have a kind of a reverse cyclical relationship to what our enrollment patterns are. So from this pattern, we're going to look at, again, our opening day, 262,000 SSH, but now we're going to look at the cost component. So we set up costs for 290,671 SSH. So we're about 90 percent of what we figured cost for, and that makes sense, because it's unlikely we're going to go to 100 percent on every single course. In fact, when you approach beyond 90 percent, it's hard for a student to find a schedule. It becomes more difficult when we're looking at a face-to-face class, when we're looking at certain hours of the day, that kind of thing. Online's a little bit easier, because we can fill those to capacity, and you'll see differences when we break that out. But in terms of the active sections, when we put them onto the schedule, they are guaranteed for students. Once they're on the schedule and visible for students, they're guaranteed, regardless of the enrollment. Of course, our focus is to build that up as high as we can. So as of opening day, we had about 48 sections that were in tentative, those were sections the deans held back as we went along. We've already released 15 of those, so forth for the rest of the semester, as we started to fill up express session classes, and we use that to manage the schedule. We'll hold some of those back, because that'll offset our difference in the revenue projections we looked at on the prior slide, because by not offering that course, I don't have an adjunct cost structure to go along with it, so it helps me offset some of my costs.
Let's be sure, so if you have 40 sections of Composition 1, on day one, you don't advertise all 40 sections, you might do 32, 33, 34. As the enrollment builds, and students having trouble making schedules, then you release additional sections in. So we hold back some sections, knowing that we may not need everyone. We plan for them, we budget them, we know how we can offer them, what time we would slot them in, but unless we actually need them. So when our enrollment is down a little bit, we've often adjusted the cost side automatically, we haven't put more cost out there right away. Tough work, these guys put a lot of time on that.
Okay, the remainder of the presentation is going to show you historical year-over-year data, and this is two pictures. One is a head count, and you can see that as of opening day last Monday, we were just under 1 percent down in head count, we had almost 31,000 students here day one, and in student semester hours, we were down 1.5 percent. College presidents typically hold this kind of data close to their vest. I asked around, and I got eight or nine colleges that responded. Across the state, it ranged from being down 9 percent to one college being up, that was Polk State over in Lakeland being up 3 percent, and they're definitely in a growth mode, they're adding baccalaureate programs. Speaking of baccalaureate, our baccalaureate enrollment was up actually 7.7 percent last Monday. You see nursing was up 18 percent, business administration 13 percent, and the College of Education was up 4 percent. Some of this was, is attributed to the fact that last year we were dipping, so it's really kind of picking up from where we were two or three years ago.
Let's be sure, because it's an important piece. Last year, we made some curriculum changes in the nursing program. You had to complete the general education before you got into the program. So we had a year where the enrollment by plan dipped a little bit, not everybody was ready. So now, when we measure this year over last year, guess what? The pipeline is now flowing, okay? But it's healthy, 18 percent is misleading if you think that's real growth. If we went back two years, we'd be up 5, 6, 8 percent, something like that.
Do we also add a cohort, Dr. Law? Add a nursing cohort or something like that? Will you come through? That wouldn't affect, that wouldn't affect these numbers now, right?
We simply strengthened the qualitative aspect of the front to make sure students had a chance to, I see my dean nodding her head. I just, I asked a question, 18 percent, why am I still getting calls from hospitals saying we need more nurses? The reality is, it's making nice progress. Baccalaureate degrees up 7 percent, though, is a very healthy thing.
Yeah. And then you see the percent of the total enrollment there, baccalaureate has grown from 9 percent five years ago, it's around 13 percent today. This is a picture, three different types of students, this is head count data, continuing students, new students, and readmitted students. A continuing student is someone who is enrolled today, and they've been enrolled in at least one term in the last year. A new student is brand-new to St. Pete College, and someone who's readmitted has had at least a year of non-enrollment, they took a year off or more. And so you see the total there, continuing students were down 2.6 percent, we're actually up in new students this spring, 5.4 percent, and readmitted students is up significantly at 10 percent. Some of the noteworthy observations here, you see the AS degrees in red, we attribute some of that as shifting from some of our AS programs to some of the AA programs, especially in our limited access health programs. Nursing, for example, not every student that wants to be a nurse gets into the nursing program, and we're having conversations with those students, and sometimes shifting them to the Associate in Arts degree. The BS degree, the continuing students being up year-over-year 11 percent, almost 12 percent. Some of those are cohort models, where they're actually going through the program with a group of students, taking a specified number of courses together, and that might attribute to that number being high. We're also, the 4.4 percent readmitted in the AAs, that might be an indication, and we need to do a little more analysis there, that it's taking that AA student a little bit longer to graduate, they're taking a year off. We have 548 that weren't here in the last year, but they were here prior to that. Dr. Cooper and Dr. Williams have shared with you in the fall some legislation called Senate Bill 1720, or developmental education reform, and some of the implications of that. It has had an impact on enrollment, Dr. Cooper's going to give you a presentation in just a moment. But just to quickly refresh, this is legislation that basically said that a student who graduated from a public, a Florida public high school on or after 2007 was deemed college-ready, and that the placement test and the developmental education courses were not mandatory. And so as a result, we implemented that this spring for the first time, we have nearly 500 students that are enrolled in college-level courses that a year ago, most likely, they would have been enrolled in developmental education courses. So if we talk about success strategies, it's going to be paramount that we focus on these students.
And in all likelihood, when we come back with our, and of course, success rates for spring, this will have an implication that we'll talk about at that time.
Can we also focus on these 473?
Absolutely. We're actually, we're doing some, Pat and I are doing some very interesting analyses, where we're not only identifying who's in this new, what they, state calls exempt, what we call flexible placement category, these public school graduates in that timeframe, we're also making recommendations to them, on should they be doing dev ed or not based on their high school performance, we're using a prediction model. So we're going to track not only the group, but those that we advised to go in dev ed and chose to, and those that we advised to go to dev ed and didn't. So we'll actually have a pretty neat analysis when we come back next time and share some of that data.
In summary, 2.2 percent decline in actual versus budgeted, but as Jesse pointed out, we're going to pick some of that up through the remainder of the spring term, as we add and fill classes. 7.7 percent increase in baccalaureate, 2.5 percent decline in continuing students, a 5 percent increase in new students, and then the 23 percent decline in developmental education and those 500 students that are going to need some extra attention. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I take just a second, more numbers than you can digest at any one time, but I want you to know, we put a great deal of energy into understanding what are the dynamics of our students as they go through, where are the bottlenecks, how can we support them, how can we move them forward? The one piece that, trying to pull this all together, a year ago this semester, January 1 of '13, the college implemented what we call life plan. Students entering on that day or later had revised expectations on course completion rates. You must complete 75 percent of your courses, or we intervene in your schedule. That intervention has a variety of support features, but it. That intervention has a variety of support features, but it includes limiting how many credit hours you can sign up for. At the end of, so you started at 100%. It was no harm, no foul. Come in, do well, stay with it. At the end of December, more, just a little over 2,000 students received notices from us that they had fallen below the standards and that they would require an intervention from us before they could re-register. The reality is, it split about 50/50. About half went through and did re-register, and about half did not. Now, they were eligible to re-register. They're not really on probation. They simply have some restrictions on how many courses they can take moving forward. We knew we would be creating some bottlenecks in this regard. The policy came out of a sense that there were students who were overreaching, students who were, in some cases, taking enrollment so that they could get more financial aid, a whole variety of reasons. It was not adding to the qualitative dynamic in the classroom. So as we sit here today, there's 1,000 students who we intervened with who didn't sign up again. Some will come back. For some, it's a wake-up call. I wasn't really serious. I don't know why I keep doing this. I'm reading headlines about borrowing a zillion dollars. I'm not going to do this. For some, though, we're feeling really good. We have 1,000 students who are now on a very supportive supplemental plan to make sure they don't get in worse shape before they drop out. So we're going to stay the course on this. This is a qualitative issue. This strengthens the role of the classroom experience. Those students, we've been in constant contact with them. They could walk in tomorrow and meet with a counselor and get back on track.
2,000 of how many?
2,000 of 33,000.
No, that started since you...
Oh, I don't know how many of the... That's a good question. How many students would have been first time in college under the new policy?
Right.
Close to 9,000?
Yeah, it'd be 9,000 or 10,000, I'd be my guess. And that's...
That's a chunk of change.
And that's why we did it, though.
2,000 of 9,000, that's a chunk of change.
And you're really making... We're concerned. Those were students who previously looked like they were progressing when they weren't. Or they were progressing in ways that eventually they would fall off the edge. They're not going to meet financial aid standards of progress. They're dropping out of courses at unacceptable rates. You know, if you'd sign up for five courses and get three Ws and two As, you have a 4.0 grade point average. But you're only passing 40% of the courses you sign up for. That's the issue we were trying to get our arms around. So, you know, we've got to get out of this continuous, ever-so-slight decline semester over semester. But we're not going to do anything that damages the quality. So stick with us as we bring back the plan for enrollment growth as well as qualitative growth. I think my team's done a pretty good job on... We know what we're doing. Whether it's right or wrong is for others to judge.
Any questions? Comments?
We'll ask Vice President Cooper to just give us the upshot on the developmental. That one, we saw 500. Yeah, she's got a little more information that I want to share. Here's where I'm headed on this. The day of reckoning is coming over the horizon. Students who opted to go in courses where we didn't think they were going to succeed, that reality is going to brush over them in the next couple of weeks. And I suspect we will start seeing students saying, "How did I get in this mess?" And we'll be happy to show them where they checked the form. But we owe them something a little bit better than just simply reminding them. So, Madam Vice President.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. As you heard, our developmental education enrollment is down 23% this spring term. And we believe that much of that has to do with the developmental education reform. As you heard, we have a population of students that we are referring to as the flexible placement group. And what we are doing with these individuals, since they are not required to complete the college placement test as part of their onboarding process, is we are using their high school records to advise them. And based on our model, there are a number of students who come to us in this population who we are advising them that they would do best if they would consider taking developmental education courses. As you can see from this chart in regards to math, 833 flexible placement enrollments are in math courses. Of those, 509 of those students were recommended to take a developmental education course. What you see, however, is that a little over half, or 266 of those students, decided to follow our advice and take a developmental education math course, whereas 243 went on to enroll in college-level math courses. We also have identified, based on those high school records, those that we feel are likely college-ready. And as you can see, there were 324 of those in regards to math. 300 went on to enroll in college-level math courses, whereas 24 probably decided, because maybe they didn't do well in math in high school, or maybe they're coming back after being out for a while, that it would behoove them to take developmental education math first, so they're more likely to be successful. So we applaud that group of students for their choice. In regards to our writing courses, 803 of the flexible placement students are in writing courses this term. 294 of those students were recommended to take a developmental education class. As you can see, only about 1/3 of those students decided to follow our advice and take the developmental writing course first, whereas 188 of them moved on to college-level ENC 1101 or COMP1. Then we had about 500 students who were considered college-ready based on their high school records. 447 enrolled in college-level or ENC 1101. And 62, probably again, maybe didn't do well in high school or have been out for a while, they decided to take the developmental education step first. Then in regards to our reading, 713 of the flexible placement students are in reading courses or ENC 1101. About 300 of them were recommended to take developmental reading first. Only 73, or about a quarter of those students, decided to follow our advice, where 218 have moved on into college-level courses, ENC 1101 or sometimes other gateway courses. There is concern in regards to their ability to be able to comprehend and understand the textbooks associated with some of those courses. And as you can see, there were over 400 students in that group who were considered college-ready that had moved on to the college-level courses. Only a handful decided to do the developmental first. So what does this mean? We are, excuse me, our deans and CEDL are working very closely with our faculty, both our full-time and our adjunct faculty, in making sure that they have a good understanding of how to embed success strategies into these courses and work with these groups of students by either providing supplemental instruction, for example, through our MOOC in math and writing. Obviously, our learning centers are available to these students, and so we are working very closely with our faculty to assist them in making sure that these students have every opportunity to succeed. And so we are holding on until we have more information, and we will update you. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members?
Just a statement. Apparently, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
Hundreds of students, I think, are misplaced this semester by their own choice.
I'd like to share this information with the Phil's County School Board. Because what it tells me is that their quality, the quality they're putting out, I'm not going to, is not where they may think it is. I don't know how anybody else feels about... Sorry. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but...
Our deans are working with the leads in math and writing and reading areas because there is concern. I think if we move a little later into the 2010, 11 years forward, that there's been much better attention paid to the high school students truly being college-ready when they get to us. So we're hoping that we're going to see improvements in that regard. But yes, we are working closely. I think some of the things that have helped is the placement test occurring in the high schools now at the junior level, so that students are aware, "Am I college-ready or not?" And then there are courses being provided to them in their senior year that they have to complete to, of course, acquire those skills. So I think we're going to see some improvement as we move forward. But for the students that are coming to us now, we are concerned.
And that test of junior year started what year? 2011?
I believe 2011. 2011, yes.
We're still two, I mean, still two years out, though.
Yeah.
Right.
Dr. Law, if I may speak, correct me. The legislature, which thinks is doing everything right all the time, moved to this because, and most school, let me just start by saying this. Most school districts would be in the same situation that we are. They would, from that 2007 situation where they put their stamp of approval that these folks would meet the minimum requirements and would be able to move directly into college-level courses, right? Most school districts would be in that same situation, saying, "Oh, well, we say this, but then when we actually get to college or to a community college or university," that they would be in the same situation, right?
That's correct, sir.
All right. The number two thing is, I just want to make sure that our early alert system is still put on these students because they're going to be in trouble. More than, you know, there are very few students that transition well from high school to college, whether it's maturity, whether it's study habits, whether it's knowing how to study, what you're studying for. It is completely different, it's a different pace. So I just want to make sure that we still have this backstop for these students to make sure they don't, you know, fail.
Yes.
Ultimately, it still falls in our numbers.
The early alert is in our gateway courses. And so we are obviously very in tune with making sure that our faculty understand how to use that and that they are going to be on top of that situation. Because the earlier we can, of course, identify those that are in need of more assistance, the better.
And so, Dr. Cooper, just to clarify what happened. So a student goes in this course not doing well, a instructor realizes that, we get our early alert system in place. We notify all the proper people. What happens at that point?
Well, hopefully, we can create what we call an action plan and assist that student in recognizing that they need additional time on task if they're going to be successful in that course. We will encourage them to consider, you know, "Did you make the right decision?" We will assist them if they decide that, okay, maybe I bit off more than I can chew. So we will do whatever we can to assist them because we have an express session and we have an eight-week mod two, in which we might be able to shift them if they feel that that's what's necessary. What we would like to do is provide them with the out-of-class support, the supplemental instruction first, to see if we can't move them forward successfully.
Who calls them in? Like, who calls a student and says, "We recognize you're having a problem in this course. Come to my office so we can talk about..."
Right. That can happen in one or two ways. It could be the faculty member themselves reaching out to the student. Or it could be that if the faculty member, say, hasn't seen the student for a couple of classes, then they would hit the early alert. And then our student affairs staff, our success coaches, would contact, reach out to the student. And we have used all kinds of methods, even going to a class where we know the student's going to be, to encourage them to get the help.
The reason I ask that question, I just don't want somebody to say, "We didn't have a plan in place." And here, you know, a parent comes in and says, because, believe me, the parent's still involved in the first year. And so, the parent's going to come in and say, "Well, why didn't so-and-so, didn't Ms. Bello then call my student's side and sit my daughter's side and say, 'Oh, well, you know, you're not doing well, so we need to get you in.'" And we recognize you have these programs, but you didn't utilize them. So I just want to make sure that we're on the record as saying we have something in place to help these students. Because they are going to, some of them are going to fall into trouble. Some are going to surprise us that they are prepared. So we need to be prepared on both sides.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to have these stats, though, back. We're going to have these stats back by probably June or July.
Oh, for sure. For sure. We'll have it before that. Mid-semester, we'll know what's really happening with students.
Just to back it up a little tiny bit, you guys have heard me say several times, mom of three graduating seniors this year. All were the first ones to take the college-level test first year they were allowed. Excuse me. And then, all of a sudden, as a parent, we got this letter in the mail saying something about flexible or not with no explanation with, I'm like calling my kid going, "What does this mean? Are you in trouble?" What, you know? What was the purpose? I mean, what did the legislator think they were going to? And I wasn't on the board at that time. And so I think there's, I mean, I don't even know what they thought they were going to accomplish by eliminating developmental.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me spank you. I will tell you what I think, I know for sure. I don't think any of us have been comfortable over time that students should graduate high school not ready for college. So that the eternal discussion about developmental education has, as long as I've been a president, we've had that discussion. There was some research in the last year or two that said, using cutoff scores, I want to be careful here, very close to that determination of college-ready or not, those that were close to the cutoff score, the tool was imprecise. Students on each side of the score had an equal chance of succeeding at college level, right? So you're using a score, and then you're finding some students just below that score are succeeding the same as students just above that score. As legislators are wont to do at times, that translated into the test doesn't really matter because it doesn't really diagnose students' needs. So taking the ones who were close to success and then generalizing it to students who are nowhere near success ends up with a plan that says, "Let the student make the determination as to where they would like to start their college career." They've graduated. We've told them they can go on to college. They've done that. And you see Mr. Gibbons and I smiling. Mr. Gibbons used his good offices from his other professional life to almost get the train back on the track. We thought we had it.
We thought we had it.
We thought we had it, and they backed up, and we tried to do it.
It's human nature, if you're not good at something, not to want to do it more.
And that's why we don't use the term "opt out of" the math, okay? You must, in fact, take it. You have flexible choices on what you do, only because we're trying to say you must do this. All right, let me, we'll answer questions forever. We're learning as we go. If we had not had a year and a half run-up of out-of-class support, of early alert, of the interventions that you saw working in the prior, I would be sending a panic signal to you today. If we were saying, "We don't know how to help these students," we would have a royal mess on our hands. We know how to help them, whether we can do it, scale it up fast enough, whether we can intervene fast enough, whether the system can be executed the way we've designed it. Again, we know it works. Wow. Hard work to do.
I'll add one thing. Ms. Bello, this person who pushed this legislation is a good friend of mine, but got very arrogant. I mean, I think he thought that this would be some type of litmus test or a challenge to the local school districts to see how much better they could do at preparing people for college. When it worked in the reverse, you know, it would, you put this test out there and you say, "Okay, well, if you pass this test, you're ready for college." Well, I can tell you, just from being on this board for the past seven or eight years, that I've seen students have a 1.9 come in here and tear it up. And then I've seen students that have a, and Dr. Goran can speak to this one directly. We've seen a student that has a 3.9 GPA, does well, comes in and comes into the school, they burned it up in high school, come into college, is just not prepared mentally, emotionally, or in a maturity level for college. And so it's different for each student. And I think that Mr. Negron just kind of, I think he got, Dr. Law and I, I think, we thought we had it back on track. We really did. We thought we had put him in a place where he was comfortable with making the decision that, "Maybe this is not the time for this." And then, you know, of course, how the legislature works, you get a few more people that fill your ego with three or four different things and say you're doing the right thing, and you go right out there and you, you know, pass this. So we really don't know why they passed this. But I think that it was almost like a challenge. If you're saying you're doing this and they're supposed to be ready for college, then why can't we go right into the college courses? And every student's not prepared for that. Most students are not prepared for that. So...
If you get, in your day-to-day contacts, somebody who's feeling aggrieved, ring the bell for us really fast.
Yeah, please.
We can, we have ways to get to them. We've done everything we can. Having raised kids in high school, I know that sometimes there's just a blank stare on the other side of the dialogue, okay? But if you, coming out of church or in your professional... But if you, coming out of church or in your professional life, or you hear someone that says, my son or daughter is struggling and they seem to be in the wrong place, ring our bell right away. Call me, we, we'll reach out to that student. Don't let them get away from us. We know how to do this, but, it's, it's scary.
But these, these students that, um, rock stars, as I'm going to call them, who chose to move on over our recommendations, um, they are in the exact same, pardon me, they're in the exact same situation, though, where, um, if they have, if they don't meet certain criteria, we're gonna reduce their credit hours, we're gonna reduce, okay? So, the same safety nets are in place for them. Um, I, I come from a corporate world, and we're not good at warm and fuzzy. You in the educational world are much better at warm and fuzzy. But this may, this may be some time for some tough love. And, and I don't mean tough love as in booting people out, because I get the numbers and I get how, I, I get that, too. But sometimes, not being warm and fuzzy is very productive.
Warm and fuzzy's the nicest thing anyone's ever said about me, okay? I see you about to tear up over here.
I was saying it generally. My mom was a teacher for thirty years, so I, I, there's just a different approach. But, you know, sometimes, as, I won't finish that sentence, but sometimes, tough love and some phraseology that should only be used behind closed doors, um, not meaning the bad words that I have to pay the swear jar for, but, you know.
Dr. Law, can I respond just a second?
Please, sir.
I agree with you, Ms. Weston. My biggest concern is not, is not how well they do in the courses. What happens typically, and I've seen this happen a lot, is you get this minority student who has opted out of this thing and get themselves so.
When you say opt-out, you mean opt-out of the developmental program?
Opt-out of their, yeah. Developmental program.
Okay, all right, I'm with you now.
Um, and, and in the past, they didn't have that option, but now they do. So they opt out of it, they totally screw up this semester, screw up their financial aid, and then you got five years later, they're trying to come back, and they're all screwed up, and we, and for some reason, we couldn't, we, we couldn't get them turned around. That's why this is so critical, because now, if you don't make it, y- y- you got such a short window to do this, and, and then financial aid's trying to figure out, you're on, you're back on the payment schedule, outma- working at Walgreens, trying to pay that back, and trying to figure out how to get back in school. It's just, i- i- it turned out to be a nightmare. I see students, uh, twenty years later saying, oh, well, I need to go back to school, and I'm directing them to Dr. Williams, and she's like, hey, there's nothing I can do, I need to pay this one back, or, you know, they're writing these letters, and so they don't understand the impact today. They think they're just going to college, and, 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 and that's not the reality of this. It's, it, it's being responsible for financial aid, you gotta be a good student, gotta stay in good academic standing to get financial aid, and, so all this stuff ties together, and they don't see that in the first semester when they're opting out of this thing. And it's, it's gonna be critical, I'm telling you, it's gonna be tough. You might, you're right, we're gonna have to give them some tough love, because some of them aren't gonna make it, and then we're, it's not just about the numbers, it's just, you know, the reality is that this is gonna have a real impact on the, on the community college system statewide. And, and, you know, I don't know, Mr. Lang could probably tell you better than anybody, he's, um, been around this stuff forever, so have we ever done anything like this before in the past? I, I don't remember it, if we have, and I'm, but I'm young, so.
I don't remember a specific. There always has been a concern, and the concern has been exactly as expressed here today. I can tell you confidently, it's never been solved, and I think that it, it presents the continuing challenge.
We appreciate the board's engagement on this issue. We want you to know we're working at as hard. It's the toughest challenge I've had in twenty-five years, because it does go against a lot of things we, we hold dear, and, um, uh, trying to make that transition for students to take ownership, um, it's, it's lonely sometimes. But listen, we're gonna stay with it, we'll keep you updated, all the cards are face-up. Your, your guidance and input is incredibly valuable to us, we don't want to do anything that this board is uncomfortable with, we're giving it our best, we'll, we'll stick with it. We, we won't, we won't fixate on it, but we will keep you informed over the semester as we see this unfold. This is the first semester that we're living with, with the new rules, so we'll, we'll let you know what we're learning.
And there also comes a point where, Endeavor, and you may bark at me when I say this, but there comes a point where if we've reached out to someone three or four times, and we don't get any response, shame on them.
Shame on them.
Because there comes a point where we've got students that, that welcome our advice and welcome our help, and for us to be spinning our wheels on somebody who's blowing us off, and then we do get that letter from mom going, gee, what happened? I think, we called on this day, we called on this day, you know what, get control of your kid, is a great answer.
We, we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Nope, I agree.
On a much more positive note.
Grants. Ms. Great, how you doing this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm Jackie Skrit, I'm the Executive Director of Grants Development, and I'm here to present to you our midterm report for the year. I wanted to begin by sharing with you our performance metrics. Um, as you will see, we're experiencing another very successful year in grant awards. Uh, we have reached the eight-point-five-million-dollar mark in the first six months.
Wow.
And this represents a broad portfolio of, of grants from funders ranging from the Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Education, the Florida Department of Education, and the Gates Foundation. We're also currently working on, or have submitted, a total of about four million dollars, uh, in grants that if we're awarded, we project about twelve million dollars in grants for the year. This is compared to our fourteen-point-five-million-dollar, uh, or a little over, that was awarded last year, and, which is pretty good, because that includes a very large fifteen-million-dollar grant, uh, that, that usually kinda skews the numbers a little bit. So we're, we're pretty comparable to last year's success. Uh, I did want to point out that the orange bars are the funds that were awarded to the college, uh, and that the yellow bar from last year are the dollars that went to our subcontracted partners under the Florida Trade Manufacturing Grant, our other college partners. Um, you may ask, what is, um, what is the key to our success, or why we've been so successful over the last two years? And I'd like to think it's two primary reasons. Uh, the first is that we align our projects to the strategic priorities of the college, primarily improving student success and developing career pathways. Um, we also design our projects around initiatives we're already working on, um, innovative initiatives and practices that are showing promise. How do we move that forward? How would, how do we bring these together, align them, and move the needle faster? So I have highlighted a couple of grants that, um, use this process. The first is the U.S. Department of Energy Strengthening Institutions Title III Grant that we were awarded last October. It really was, um, again, enhancing the college experience and moving that needle faster. How do we integrate these? How do we, uh, im- create a communication system around what we're doing? How do we, how do we expand upon what we're doing? Um, we believe that the U.S. Department of Education agreed with us, and they awarded that two-point-five-million-dollar grant in a very tough, uh, competition last year. In fact, our FPO, our Federal Project Officer, who manages our project, uh, commented, uh, when I met with her, that she wasn't aware of anyone that's actually been awarded in their first attempt. So, um, that was very good to hear. Uh, and the second one is the National Science Foundation project that we're currently working on, to improve undergraduate education in science, technology, engineering, and math, or better known as STEM. And that's a program where we're designing an ecosystem around education and STEM that involves practices to, uh, improve practices to engage students in their, uh, program of study around STEM, help them to complete it, also helping our teachers, uh, in elementary and middle school, who may need additional skills in teaching science and math, and also developing a tracking system or a badge system within our community in partnership with our community nonprofit organizations and workforce that tracks out-of-class activities and in-school activities, and really helps create this pipeline, um, from education to career. And the last one I highlighted is actually a community partnership. Um, it's a project through the U.S. Department of Energy to design and build a green living demonstration center at our Seminole campus, uh, over the next year or a year and a half. And, uh, what that will do, will display or showcase renewable energy or energy-efficient technologies, uh, that are used to improve our environment, that our students, our residents, and our businesses will be able to, to view and, and study from and incorporate into their own homes. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, board members?
Ms. Great, thanks, you do a great job. Just very quickly, I would love to see us get a grant centered, uh, centered around STEM for our collegiate high school, and then also, um, our graduate programs. Have we looked at any grants towards our graduate, I mean, not graduate programs, but our bachelor programs?
Absolutely. This, this particular project would do that, it encourages the pathway, um, and transfer into four-year degree programs, and not just at our, um, you know, partner institutions, but at St. Pete College.
Here, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Great job, as usual. Um, we're down to midterm update, Dr. Law?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I've done a lot of construction projects, so I, I'm a trust-but-verify kind of guy, so when they tell me we're making progress, I, I like to see pictures and things that make me think real, real stuff is, you have to trust that this is the site, but...
That's funny.
You have my word, I know. You have my word, this is the site. Uh, site work development has begun, the retention pond's been enlarged, the sod's been laid down, the, uh, base for the park, the new parking lot is, uh, right around the corner. The building pad itself is being established, compaction of the soil, um, is ongoing, the structures for the underground drainage are, are scheduled to be delivered today or tomorrow. So all the subservice work should be done in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to then move the Johnny Ruth Clark folks into the new parking area, and, uh, masonry and concrete trades have been awarded, so the foundations will begin to go in the ground, uh, probably early February. So we're, we're moving along well. Any questions or input?
I think we are ready to send out to you our proposed date for a ceremonial naming and groundbreaking. I, uh, if memory serves, I've forgotten. Tanja, I'm looking to you, or Kevin.
March first.
March first, okay. We'll, we'll get that. We will, I think we had the final sign-off last week, and we'll get that on your schedule, okay, for some community-related kinds of things. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, members of board, kind of, you know how this project is, has taken a toll on, on all of us, but at yesterday's MLK ceremony, um, it was the hit. Several people mentioned it in very positive terms about the nature of the work that we should be doing as a college, and it was, uh, it, it made up for a lot of the harder days that we've, we've faced in the past. So thank you for your, your steadfastness on this.
Any questions, board members?
We're moving right along. Administrative matters. Update on the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen salary schedule?
I'm using the mouse, right? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Patty Jones, Vice President of Human Resources, and I'd like to start by giving you a little context. In March of twenty thirteen, the board approved and updated administrative and professional salary schedule. We did this after a significant amount of work with our consultant, Fox Lawson and Associates. Well, in the ensuing months since that was implemented, we had identified just a couple areas where the grades were a little too close to adequately distinguish the differences and the work done by the positions in those grades. Specifically, grades ENF and grades G and H. As you can see, there's a very small difference in starting pay, creating potential recruitment, challenges, and internal inequity. So what I'm bringing to you today is a refined salary schedule that aims to fix that. So at the right of this are the streamlined grades. This is the relevant excerpt of the updated salary schedule, where you see grades ENF are combined, and grades G and H are combined, excuse me, and also that we are renaming it to avoid any confusion with the past salary schedule with Roman numerals. These tweaks are very minimal overall. Of the fifty-nine employees moving to a new grade, only twenty-nine are receiving pay adjustments, but we believe that the overall impact will be significant and result in a strengthened salary schedule.
How much are the twenty-nine adjustments?
The, the total of the twenty-nine adjustments is about thirty-four thousand dollars.
The, um, as we afforded people the opportunity to, uh, to appeal their placement, invariably the placements were, I look more like that than this, and, and we're talking about a thousand dollars difference at the entry step in these grades. Over time, they had just gotten too close. So by making reasonable grades, I have one overriding principle. We should be able to hire a replacement at or near the first step in a grade. If that's not the case, then you have a schedule where, why have a schedule if people are all over the, the map? So this is a, I think, the, uh, the, the last best adjustment to get us administratively squared away. It's, it's modest for every purpose. We just need to do, though, because we're gonna move people and open the next year with this in, in tough. Mr. Chairman, that requires action.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have to step back and, um, take D1A, um, that requires a motion to accept the personnel report.
So moved?
Let's properly move.
Second.
Properly second, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, and we accept the personnel report, and we're moving down to our finance report, Dr. Duncan. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, very quickly, it's hard to believe we're at the midpoint of the fiscal year. Seems like we were just starting.
We've gotten so much more.
On the, uh...
We've already spent through March, you know?
Yeah, right. Uh, the, the trend line is, is very consistent with what you've seen up to this point. One thing, with revenue being down about, um, you, you notice on the chart, it says three percent. I just want to point out that our revenue this year, we, we had two weeks of, of registration in January, whereas we only had one last year. So I expect next month, we, you'll see that, that revenue catch up, uh, because of that registration period. Um, otherwise, we're still, uh, very healthy, we, we're still running about an eight-point-seven million surplus, which, as I said, uh, I believe in November, you will see that spent quickly as, as now we've captured most of our tuition, so we will now use our surplus to, to spend out the rest of the year. Uh, you, you notice, I think Jesse talked about the, the reduction in the adjunct cost because of the holding back the tentative sections, where you see that, it's about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, two percent reduction in the adjunct cost as a result of that, that's also reflected on this. So that's what we want to do. If, if our revenue goes down, we also want to, uh, keep spending in line with, with our revenue, and right now, we're in good shape, so. Uh, with that, uh, Jim O'Connor's gonna speak briefly about the budget process.
So as we're starting to work on the fourteen-fifteen budget, and even though we're halfway through the thirteen-fourteen year, we're starting to look at how we think thirteen-fourteen's gonna land and how it's trending. So right now, these are, this is a preliminary look at where we think we're gonna end. Our revenues are down, uh, it's approximately two percent based on enrollment, so that's the tuition, and then also what you're seeing in other student fees, which are all the other types of student fees that, that they pay, such as the technology fee, distance fee, lab fee, learning resource fee, application fee. Also, you'll see on the other revenue sources line, on the budget side, that includes a two-point-one-five-million-dollar stabilization reserve that we budget every year. It's pretty much a budget against our fund balance in case that we are needed to use that, that money for anything. As you can tell over on our trend of eight million dollars, we're looking at bringing the true other revenues over, but we don't anticipate needing to use any of that revenue. Our operating expenses, as Doug's mentioned, we've been managing those in line with the enrollment that we've been seeing, and so we're projecting that will land, um, pretty balanced at the end of the year with a slight surplus of revenue over expense of approximately three-hundred-thousand dollars. Some key dates as we're going into the budget process, on February second, the governor's budget's due. The legislative budget session starts on March fourth and will end on May second, so we'll be periodically hearing what's going on throughout that budget session and incorporating that into our budget. Internally, as we're starting to work on our budget, one of our key dates is on March sixth. That's our strategic budget presentation day. As part of that day, anyone across the college before then has time to put in any strategic budget requests, and then on that day, they all actually come in here and they each have the opportunity to present their request, and that is streamed live so that anyone on any of the campuses can see that. And then we'll be working through prioritizing those requests and seeing what's going on with our revenue. On, in May is the BOT Budget Workshop, which is when we'll be bringing the final budget to you for approval to look at. However, over each month now, we'll be bringing updates to you as we're looking at our priorities, seeing how our revenue's projecting out, and then our final budget is due to the state in detail by June thirtieth. Any questions?
We work to have the budget essentially finished for the May board meeting. That way, if there are any questions, any concerns, any reservations that board members have about the budget, we can bring those back at June so that there's a timely process for submission to the state. So... for submission to the state. So over the next few months, as we work through, there'll be no surprises to you, but when we pull it all together in May, you'll get a look at it in its final form. And then any last-minute changes or adjustments you'd like can come back in June, and then it's done and done. So we're trying to just get an orderly process here. We're holding our breath for the governor's budget recommendation.
Thank you. We're down to item D3A, which is lease of Xerox color printer, and B, which is the lease for the library learning support comments to pay for print copiers.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're down to informational reports, Dr. Law. Non-exempt purchases?
These are all through the rearview mirror, so this is for you to know what, what discretion I've exercised, and I would, they don't require action.
Nope.
They are simply there as a matter of information.
Nope. Down to academic matters. If there's no questions or comments on the, on item four or five.
No.
We're down to item E, academic matters, academic calendar. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is part of an annual process where we submit our academic calendar.
Hold on, we're getting ahead of ourselves here. This is the academic calendar, okay?
Yeah.
Where we submit our academic calendar to, to the state, and we need your approval. What we are asking to do is the same as we did this year. The additional time that we had between the fall and the spring term in regards to after the holidays, being able to accommodate students, we would like to do the same next year. And so that's what we're asking approval for. And then we submit that to the state.
Sorry, any discussion, board members, about this?
So moved.
Move, move in second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're on to the letter of intent to initiate baccalaureate approval process.
Now.
This is part of the state process. If we want to add a new baccalaureate program to our cadre, and as you know from the December Strategic Board Workshop, we introduced the idea of adding a new baccalaureate program. And this is just to show you where we are in that process. So now it's time to submit our letter of intent to the state with your approval, and you will see the full proposal, which will come back to you in November of 2014. I'd like to share a little bit about this degree program. It is a Bachelor of Applied Science in Arts and Entertainment Technology. We feel that it is very different and has some excellent aspects associated with it that will make it one that will attract a new population of students who are interested in the arts but don't feel that they may fit into what is commonly out there in regards to Bachelors of Fine Arts programs. And so we feel that this will bring in new student population. It focuses on the employability of the students so that when they graduate, they can get a job. Some of the reasons for this is it's kind of like an apprenticeship program. It's project-based. It's interdisciplinary so that students who are interested in the arts can come together with those that may be doing the lighting, the, the background, the advertising, and understand all of those aspects associated with being in arts and entertainment so that they can be successful. They will have real-world, hands-on experience, either internally with our own arts and entertainment projects, or with our partners such as the Palladium, American Stage, Ruth Eckert Hall. We also have embedded in the curriculum entrepreneurial studies because we know that many of these individuals may be self-employed, and so it's important for them to understand how to be successful in the business world in that respect. And we also feel that it will serve the artists as well as the technologists, and many opportunities for partnerships with others within the community. Any questions?
With us today is Mark Matthews, who's our Program Chair for our Mirror Program, the electronic music program. We've, we've worked very hard to make sure this has a focus on employability. We still have a lot of work to do to document. We had the great opportunity to be with business leaders last week. I wish this was a program where you could say, here's where you go to a company that makes 100 million bucks, who sells 100 million dollars a day. They have these number of people. They just hire on these categories, and they do. It doesn't work that way. This is a much more eclectic flavor. As you see though, you know, think, think of what is happening in production technologies. We'll, we'll see the Super Bowl. We'll see all kinds of things. Everything is a production now, so this is a pretty robust field. We have a good running start. We're going to run pretty hard with this one. It's kind of, it's a little different. It's, the employer groups are not as identifiable. The, the metrics aren't quite the same, but Mark and his team have done a really good job teeing this one up. So we'll, we'll keep you informed. It, it won't leave until you approve it, but we need to file an intent so that we can start the dialogue with partner institutions around the state if anyone has any concerns.
When do we see this being offered?
It would be the fall of 2015.
Go backwards if you would, just to, to, we, we worked very hard on this schedule to, to, for a variety of reasons, but so that you always feel in comfort. So today, the checkmark will go next to the January 1st, where you're saying, go ahead and get the paperwork started, continue the exploration. It comes back to you in November in its full form. You'll see the full proposal at that point.
This would also include, I, I saw some of the things that are going to be embedded in there, but this would also include like modern dance and all that stuff, or no?
To date, it's not that part. It's not that performance part, okay? It's, it's the technology. Mark, just step up here.
It's more the technology stuff.
It's more the technology, the production, the, yeah, the...
Can you put up the, if somewhere in there, there's a list of the jobs. I just looked at them. They're on one of the, there, it's...
It's in the letter of intent.
Yeah. It's like video editor, videographer, game developer, game developer, by the way, is $81,000.
This is not fine art. This is a...
I got it. Got it, Devin.
The idea, the idea here is to create a program that services, you know, the entertainment business as it stands today. There's not a lot of institutions that are doing that. There's, there's institutions serving the artistic community in a traditional form. There's, there's institutions that serve the technology in a traditional form. What this is going to do is fuse all of them together, so they work together. Their, their, the traditional approaches haven't isolated. We're going to do lighting over here, and we're going to do video technology over here. We're going to do them all. And then the, the first time they get together is when they're out in the workplace. And that's how it's always been. This is going to model the professional experience, where our students, by the time they leave here, they will have done a short film. They will have done advertising. They will have done radio programming. They will have, the sky's the limit for what they, for what they approach. And so the, the question about the dance, the bottom line is, if there's people behind the camera, there's got to be people in front of the camera. And we have a lot of that already in our program. We have a dance program here. We have, we have a really robust moving theater program. And so we're going to have the bodies. Eventually, we'll, we'll, we'll build upon those successes. But right now, in order to begin, we're going to focus on the technological approach, because the bottom line is, if you got one of these, you got to have somebody to speak into it. And that's, and that's where this whole program comes from. And it's based on my experience out in Los Angeles in the, in the music business. And so we feel, we've done, we've worked really hard at this.
I know.
And for four years. And kudos to Dr. Law for even expanding it and, and putting his input in. The project-based experiential learning component of this really came out of a meeting that we had, the three of us had. And it's, nobody is doing this. Nobody.
That's great.
Because can pull this off except us. And we're very excited about it.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
I hear a motion to accept.
So moved.
Item E2, so moved, second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We're up to online revitalization.
All right. Moving on, we'd like to give you a little update on our online migration and revitalization, as you remember from the strategic workshop in December. This is a big project that we are, we have embarked on. Over 100 members of the college got together and served on various committees, and you have, Dr. Law has this report for you this morning. It has been vetted, not only through the committee members, our consultant, but our faculty, and that input has been embedded into the, the report. And one of the top priorities was to, obviously, based on our history in this, in this field of online education, where we are the largest provider in the Florida college system for online education, we wanted to ensure that if we moved forward with a revitalization, that we were strategic in our approach, particularly in regards to the organizational structure going forward for this part of our college and our academic programs. So one of the first things that we are recommending is that we move the infrastructure under the academic area, and we bring in a associate vice president who would be the lead facilitator in regards to the changes that need to be made, and that, that this individual would work with a steering committee that would be made up of various members throughout the college, senior vice presidents, deans, provosts, associate vice presidents, executive directors, faculty, as well as our instructional design specialists. And we feel that it's very important because now we want to vet the various recommendations and decide on how we can implement and move forward. We have a very large number of courses, having chosen a new learning management system, that need to be moved over, but then we also want to make sure that those courses, once they're moved over, meet a new standard in regards to the quality of the product. And so one of the first things that we are going to be doing is having the steering committee address course standards as well as faculty certification processes as we move forward. We want to make sure that the associate vice president position has a strategic position within the college, so they are going to be a member of the executive committee, and they are also going to work, of course, with our provosts and deans in regards to planning, not only of the course schedules, but also making sure that we have the quality and that we also have the online student services. Many of our students, even if they're not taking online courses, of course, expect to be able to do things online. And so we want to improve greatly in that regard. So we, we'll have three main arms that will be reporting to this associate vice president. Two are in existence now. Those are our chief technology arm, and those will be the individuals that help to maintain the learning management system and provide the help desk kind of assistance to our students and our faculty in regards to that management system. Then we have our instructional design and development team. These are the individuals who are going to help assist the faculty in designing their courses, moving them over to the new learning management system, as well as providing opportunities and training, and making sure that we have the interactive tools within our online courses that help to support student success. And then a whole new area in regards to our organizational structure is, of course, built out of our focus on student success. And with online courses, it's easier for a student to kind of fall through the cracks and get lost. So we want someone who's going to be focused on student success as well as the integration of this whole part of our academic programs into the college. So they will be assisting, this will be a new executive director, and they will be assisting in making sure that we're tracking students, that if they haven't logged into their course in a couple of days, identifying the faculty member so that they can reach out to them, similar to what we're doing with our early alert system in our existing courses, so that they can be identified and, of course, put back on track as quickly as possible. This individual will also assist with planning and scheduling, as well as the evaluation of adjuncts through our chairs, and then making sure that students who are signing up for our online courses are ready and understand what's involved in that particular modality so that they can be successful. So it's a very new and different approach, but we feel it's strategic, and we feel that it will help us get to where we need to be, to be able to stay up with the competition in this field and provide a quality product that students can be successful.
Any questions, board members? Responses?
Definitely. What's the timeline? We are, here's my intention. We have a preliminary budget, and we need to do some work on it. I will ask this board to approve a budget and these positions next month, at which point we will be operational. We will start the transition for faculty with a pilot group this summer, and we will make the transition over the, the following year. So it, and refresh my memory, how many courses do we have to make the transition on?
Over 2,000, I believe.
Yeah, we've got a lot of courses that we're, we're working on.
How many new positions? I see one.
There are two leadership positions, and then there are about four that are going to be staff positions, temporary for two or three years as we make the transition. I want to get everybody transited to the new system as rapidly as we can. Candidly, what we're trying to do is figure out what the traffic will bear on a continuing basis with a distance learning fee, and I very well may be asking the board to help capitalize some of the front end on the transition costs, just like you would do with retained earnings or something along those lines. That's the dialogue I want to have with you. I'm not prepared for that today, but we will have that dialogue next week. We need to move, it's a big animal to make the changes, more than you want to know, Mr. Fox.
The, the new positions on staff or outside?
No, we're, we're going to design those, you know, when you nod your head next week, whatever the final plan is, we will start the advertising for those positions. But I, the, the numbers have me a little bit concerned. I don't want to move forward. It's a big piece of real estate, and I want the board's comfort level to be where, where it needs to be on what we're going to spend over the next two or three years.
Right, and that's what this summary is for your review. This is in regards to additional cost to be able to support the new learning management system, as well as expanding our opportunities for training, memberships in some of the online educational professional organizations so that we can access training through them as well. Also providing professional development for our own internal, and then the new personnel. We feel that probably in that, in the fourth year, which isn't represented here, that some of those personnel brought in, like the instructional technology technicians in the beginning to get our courses transferred over, may not be needed, and we will see some of those then dropping out as we move forward. There will be some supplemental assignments. We want to work with what we call e-faculty mentors to assist other faculty, particularly our adjuncts who may be teaching for us. And so this is just for your information today. Finally, just a little bit on the timeline. The online education steering committee will be meeting on January the 28th, and as I said earlier, one of their first tasks is to create the overview of what course standards we expect courses to come up to, if there's need for improvement, as well as what type of a faculty certification process we are going to require. In the past, faculty who have been trained have primarily trained in regards to the technology associated with the learning management system, rather than as much on the pedagogy associated with teaching in the online environment. We feel that both are important, and we feel that probably this is something that should be ongoing, not a one-time deal. And so we are looking at creating a system that will support our faculty in this regard. We also want to make sure that the courses are following the major learning outcomes within the course that the faculty have agreed to, and that those major learning outcomes are being covered as well as being assessed, so we can be assured that our students are attaining what is required of them within the courses. So those will be two of the first things that that committee will be working on. Then on January 31st, we're going to bring back all the committee members that have... that have worked on the online revitalization report. We're going to review where we are in regards to progress. And then we will have the University of Central Florida lead person for their online education as a guest speaker to talk to us about their experience in regards to this transition process. In February, we're going to begin professional development in regards to online pedagogy and course migration to Desire to Learn, which is our new learning management system. Mid-February, there'll be configuration of the Desire to Learn within our systems and connection in regards to our systems. And then in May, as was pointed out earlier, we'll begin the first pilot project. And we're looking at those courses that have the largest enrollment as being the first to move over to our new learning management system. So much to do. And I just want to remind you that moving them over is the first step. Then it's bringing them up to the course standards that we want to have to ensure that there is the quality. In some instances, that may be very little. In others, that may be more to do. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you.
We are down to the, I'm opening the public hearing for the Board of Trustees Rule Manual. There are none. So I'm closing the, if there's no public speakers, I'm closing the public hearing. Dr. Law, legislative update?
Very briefly, and we'll adjourn. I was in Tallahassee both last week, the week before last. Spent a good deal, Ed Woodruff and I walked around, talked to staff and committee people at the end of the first week of sessions. There are two or three things that I will gather some more information and brief you on. I suspect the governor's budget will include performance allocations. That is, a new metric for part of the budget being determined by a series of performance metrics. We saw the first blush of this at the President's Council a couple of weeks ago. You know, the number of graduates, time to degree, number of Pell Grant students that get help, the cost of the efficiencies and those sorts of things. In round numbers, the Florida college system budget is about $1 billion. And they're still talking about a fairly small amount of money, $20 or $30 million is the first cut to see if the system really works. You saw the universities have gotten religion on this. They had several hundred million dollar guidance from the governor last year. So as soon as I think I have something to share with you, I will. It's pretty close. The other piece that we will want to spend some time here, and it may include us eventually having a team meeting with our friends at the Pinellas County School Board. The legislature is going to put a lot of focus on the workforce, excuse me, on the tech centers within the K-12 system. And Pinellas Technical Education Center does a very credible job. But in many places, those are woefully underused resource across the state. There are some very serious legislators saying we've got to get that right because many of the things we've talked about around here, getting people on the first step of career ladders is a really important thing. And that part is being poorly done in our state. And it will impact us a little bit. Listen, here's the piece I'm talking around. They may actually get a terminology that talks about them being technical colleges. And the board should have some discussion on that. My comfort level can get there. Nobody's going to confuse us with them. But they feel hugely aggrieved that as you drive back across Olmerton Road, people can put up a sign that says, I'm this college. And they compete for students at those entry technical programs. And in one case, you go to a place that's called the Technical Center. In one place, you go to a place that's called the College. The tech directors across the state think they are at a huge disadvantage on that regard. So we may have to have a quiet discussion about how to not confuse our public. But Mike Gregor and I have already had a discussion. We're not going to, until we see what the legislature proposed. Nobody's taken sides in this one. I'll make my point. This is where the jobs are in our community that has gone, that the training and education has gone largely undone. We need to work together to get more people skilled, certified, and into the workplace. So we will work with them on that. Those are the two big issues that I could discern, Mr. Chairman. We'll watch for the governor's budget. He will have something on both areas, I think.
Okay. Do you have any future agenda items that anyone would like to see on agenda? If none, we'll, our next meeting is February 18th. And at Clearwater Campus, we'll see you there. Adjourn.